I will now call this meeting to order. At this time, I please ask everyone to silence your cell phones and any other electronic Your greeters at the door is Planning Director Steven Spraker and City Engineer Alex Schuman. And to my far right and your far left, we have Recording Secretary Taylor Lockhart, City Clerk Susan Daederich, Deputy Mayor, Zone 1 Commissioner Lori Tolland.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Zone 2 Commissioner Travis Sargent.
Good evening.
And to my left and to your right, we have Zone 3 Commissioner Kristen Deaton.
Welcome, everyone.
Zone 4 Commissioner Howard Breyle.
Good evening, welcome.
City Manager Joyce Cheddon, Assistant City Manager Sean Finley, Deputy City Attorney Anne Margaret Emery. And to my far left and your far right, we have Police Chief Jesse Godfrey, Fire Chief Howard Bailey, and I am Mayor Jason Leslie. At this time, I'd like to call up Chaplain Sam Mercado of Advent Health for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, in this Thanksgiving season, we come together to thank you for our city of Ormond Beach. We thank you for the people who reside in our city and form the various communities in our town. Tonight, we also thank you for our city leaders and all who are here tonight to hear the business matters of our town. Bless us with your wisdom and guidance so our city shines as a beacon to all. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all be seated. Thank you, Chaplain, for coming. Moving on to Presentations and Proclamations section of the agenda. Today, we have two proclamations. I'd like to invite the members of the Daughters of the American Revolution, Captain James Orman Chapter, to come up to receive their proclamation. Well, actually, so I'm going to use the microphone here. You guys can go this direction. Here we go. I didn't know what you were doing. I was like, um, if you want, you could just kind of row up a little bit, and I'll just stand in the middle here. And whoever wants to hold the proclamation, I will hand it to you, and we'll kind of do that. But it's good to see some of you ladies, by the way. I saw some of you just on Saturday. Yeah. Yes. For anybody that doesn't know, they were involved in a marker dedication for Sanchez Park. So if you haven't been there, I would strongly go there and check out the marker, read a little bit more about Sanchez and some of the things he'd done for the community. Here we go. Who wants to hold the proclamation? Susan? Okay. There we go. You're only going to hear where I was about five times. Whereas Native American Awareness Week was first established in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George H.W. Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas throughout its history, the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution through its American Indians Committee has long championed their preservation of native heritage and supported educational opportunities through scholarships, cultural programs, and outreach initiatives. And whereas the history and culture of the United States has been profoundly shaped by American Indians, and the peoples who continues contributions in governance, agriculture, military service, and the arts continue to enrich the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of our nation. And whereas native peoples are admired for their resilience, and their customs, languages, and traditions are respected and celebrated as a part of rich and enduring legacy across the United States. Now therefore, I, Jason Leslie, Mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Thank you. Give these ladies a round of applause for everything they do, all right? Thank you for coming out. Thank you. You're welcome to stay, or, you know, if you've got to go home, it's okay. Next up is Entrepreneurship Month. Who's going to receive that proclamation? Brian? I guess you'd be a good fit. This is Brian Rodemacher, for anybody that doesn't know. He's the Economic Development Director, Forham Beach. Whereas entrepreneurship through small business and startups serve as vital component of the local economy, fostering innovation, creativity, and job creation while embodying the spirit of independence and self-reliance. And whereas Entrepreneurship Month provides an occasion to celebrate resilience, hard work, and dedication while highlighting the importance of entrepreneurship in driving economic development, job creation, and the pursuit of dreams. And whereas for a week during Entrepreneurship Month, with the theme of "Together We Build", the city of Ormond Beach, Volusia County, and the local community will kick off the Volusia Innovation Challenge, a countywide pitch challenge where a winner will be selected March 2026. And whereas the city of Ormond Beach recognizes the importance of supporting and empowering entrepreneurs by fostering a business-friendly environment that encourages investment, nurtures innovation, and promotes opportunities for all. And whereas the city's Economic Development Department is committed to empowering entrepreneurs year-round by providing resources, programs, and initiatives that help local businesses succeed, including the Doing Business in Ormond Beach Guide, developed with the Chamber of Commerce, the Fast Track for Entrepreneurs Course, and the Size Up Analytics Tool. Now therefore, I, Jason Leslie, Mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim November 18th, 2025, as the day to celebrate Entrepreneurship Month. I'm just going to get a little close for a picture. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to number five. At this time, we'll hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting, or any items on the consent agenda. Each person will be given a total of three minutes. As a reminder, please short-estate your name and address and speak clearly into the microphone. And I'll just add, the reason why we ask for that is because we might follow up with you later on, and it'll help us with the follow-up process. So with that, I'm going to call up First Speaker Jeff Boyle.
Jeff Boyle, 614 North Halifax Drive. On November 5th, the Daytona Beach City Commission voted 4 to 2 to offer Ormond Beach $2.5 million to purchase our city's rights to provide water and sewer services to Avalon Park. Has this offer been communicated to Ormond Beach? And if not, why not? If it has been communicated, why is the November 5th offer not on tonight's agenda? Since 2006, the two cities have not been able to agree on what compensation Daytona should pay Ormond for the services. There's never been any public discussion of the Avalon Park service issue by any of the current elected commissioners. The Daytona Beach offer should be voted on immediately. This is an opportunity to end the current court litigation and our city's costly legal service bills from McKinnon &amp; McKinnon, taking the offer with spare taxpayers, an estimated $100 million in immediate infrastructure costs to provide the services. It would remove us from a risky partnership with Daytona Beach, a city that broke a service boundary agreement in 2002 to annex the land on our side of the line, a breach that created the legal dispute in the first place. There has never been a commission discussion or citizen mandate to bear the infrastructure costs and provide the services. With the Daytona Beach decision now on the public record, our citizens are still being kept in the dark as to the cost-benefit analysis of the Avalon Park water and sewer decision. A judge might decide that Ormond is entitled to zero compensation. We ask for a public hearing and an immediate decision on the Daytona Beach $2.5 million cash offer. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Next, we have David Sweg.
David.
Yeah.
Come on up.
David. Wherever David is with the scribbly S and Z.
I'm David Siegel.
There you go, okay. I'm sorry. Maybe it's Siegel, yeah, it's...
Yeah, I, uh, I'm left-handed.
No, no, it's okay. Come on up, David. You're up, you're up next.
I'm a doctor. Look, I'm very maintain my close to our staff, because we're V.A.R. people. Well, if I screw up, I'll be in real trouble. Okay, just want to briefly address something. I've got like three pages, and I never read this stuff. David Siegel, 928 Buena Vista Avenue, Ormond Beach, Florida. I've been a resident for 68 years since I just turned that a few weeks ago. Anyway, I wanted to just kind of raise an issue that's kind of been surfacing in our neighborhood over and over. We had a neighbor that really did, I'm talking severe alterations to a house without going through any permitting. And one of the things, they've turned their garage into some kind of room, they raised the floor, and they put a phony garage door on a wall to make, well, whatever, to make you all think it's a garage. They also took a screened-in area, and the architecture of it had like small little wood screened going all the way up to the roof. The roof was supported by corner, the big stone stuff, whatever. And they walled all of that in. And in doing the alterations, they expanded their living space in the house by 76%. And they just did some other things. But I guess the point is that the house did go through a sale and all of that. But I just want to really try and kind of raise some of these issues. I mean, they actually poured a concrete slab out the back and started thinking of doing a room. This was like continuous expansion, and the house already was, it's one of those 1950s, was actually below Ormond standard for how many feet you need between the property thing. But again, my concern is that, one, if you expand the living space in your house, you're supposed to pay the higher taxes on it. And so that's what I was told by the tax assessor's office, is what is your actual living space? And this has kind of been there. We've raised the issue recently to the zoning department, and the response back was, well, how long has it been that way? You all can, you know, handle these things any way you want, but, you know, if you've got a standard that a home's supposed to have a garage, and somebody gets creative and walls it up and puts a phony, extends out the garage 10 feet with walls, and then puts a phony garage door stuck up on it, and you can't raise it, and they raised the floor about this much because the rest of the house is that far off the ground, these are significant alterations, and I just think somebody needs to be looking into these kind of things. I have files, I'm not going to brief that up tonight, but anyway...
David, stay there for one second.
Sure.
Just two things. One is that we do have your contact information here, so maybe we'll have somebody maybe follow up with you on that.
Sure.
And I think Commissioner Deaton had a comment.
I was just going to ask if you knew the address for that property.
It's 924 Buena Vista Avenue. And it's...
Buena Vista.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming out.
And you have a very good, well-run meeting. I see your friends in central Florida.
Thank you, Dave. Next, I have Alan Burton.
Alan Burton, 915 Ocean Shore Boulevard, Zone 1. I'd like to talk tonight about sacred stewardship. How does one communicate the whole idea of sacred stewardship? We have lived it in several ways in the past years that include, but are not limited to, regrow the loop, Volusia, Arbor Day, flooding, problem-solving, native planting, et cetera. We communicate stewardship in many ways, and one of them is through music. One such way was defined in 1742, when Handel first performed Messiah in Dublin, Ireland. In his 12th movement, and as a member of the Stetson University Choral Union for 25-plus years, we sang Messiah several times. And in the 12th movement, it goes, "For us, unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given..." And the next few verses really are for you, the city commissioner, so you can join me in the response, but we'll get to that in a minute. I only have three. This week, a draft of Regrow America will be forwarded to organize a new not-for-profit organization in Florida, like the Friends of Ormond Beach Performing Arts Center. This not-for-profit will forge a public-private partnership to supplement the county's Regrow Volusia program. And I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout-out to Troy Kent, the county councilman for District 4, and the county council for putting that program in. Regrow America stewardship will start right here tonight in Ormond Beach, Volusia County. My ask for you, the city commission, is to seek a relationship where the city of Ormond Beach adopts a resolution that enables a county-city partnership to regrow Volusia and Ormond Beach. Now back to Handel's Messiah verses. After listening to the rest of the movement, which you'll probably go on YouTube and take a look, you will hear a call for sacred stewardship that only you can provide. After your part, I will sing wonderful... Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Next up is G.G.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. G.G. Galloway, 1305 Oak Forest Drive, Ormond Beach. After last month, I'm very proud to give you my name and my address. I've been coming to these meetings for 40 years. Many times, I've been on the winning side, many times, I've been on the losing side. But I just think we, as citizens, need to understand civics more, and I'm very proud, Mayor, that you came out tonight and said what the importance of somebody giving their name and their address. I had never seen in all my years involved in advocacy where somebody refused to give their name or address, and I just hope that y'all continue to ask for their name and address for a couple of reasons. One, if somebody has a complaint to you, I want to make sure, I know, if I was in your situation, are they as citizens of Ormond Beach, or is it somebody that's just been brought in? The second thing is, Mayor, you said exactly, it is an excellent way to follow up. So many times, people come here and give their grievances, but I hope y'all will stick to what we've always done in the past for 40 years and continue to ask people to give their name and address. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, G.G. Next up, we have Anthony Conforti.
Guys, long time no see. My birthday just went by, so if anybody wants to give me a late gift and reopen my application, that'd be spectacular. Really would. Saying that to say this, some new information was just about to my attention. I noticed, just to compliment your existing code, that the cosmetic tattooing in Section D offers a guest artist in that space. It is only for 14 days, and I believe the filing fee for that is $210. Just came to you today for full transparency, as I operate as clear as a glass window. If I were to implement something like that after talking to my inspector, who is completely on board with approving the space, is that something that would add some grip to your slippery slope and respect the integrity of not only the board's decision, but the citizens alike with me moving forward until we come to some sort of agreement, whether it's reopening, reapplying, or getting that second motion that we're seeking, because I feel like we're very close? Maybe a better question for legal? I don't know if that makes sense.
Anybody have any comment? I'm sorry, Anthony, but, you know, happy birthday, by the way.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Is that maybe a better question for...
Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, 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 no. I was just curious if...
Okay, Travis.
Just for the record, you know, Commissioner Deaton and myself, we're on the losing end of that, so we can't bring it up, we can't be a part of that, so I just want you to understand that within that process, it would have to be someone that was on the winning end to bring it back up.
Wonderful. And the second for that motion also has to be on the winning end as well, correct? Okay, great. So if we reapply, we can do this process again via the planning board, G.G., and all these wonderful people that approved us the first time, and do what we already did? That'd be the better way to go about it.
Anne Margaret, correct me if I'm wrong, that would probably be the correct process.
Why don't you discuss with staff? Well, we can help you with that.
Okay, perfect. And which staff should I...
Start with...
Yeah, you go.
Planting department?
Yep. You can follow with Steven Spraker in the planning department.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. Have you belated. Okay, next up, we have D.W. I know you filled out several cards here, but we can only give you three minutes. All right, I hope that's, you know, I hope you understand that. And the floor is yours.
Thank you, City Commissioner of Ormond Beach. My name is D.W. Lewis. I've lived here for years. I'm a general contractor out of another state. I've been told I don't know how to do anything. That's what I've been told. I know how to do anything I want, and I'll tell you that tonight. G.G. Galloway, you want to know my address? It's Freedom, United States. I can move anywhere I want, anytime I want, any way I want. What do you need my address for? You hear me? Why do you need my address when I'm a Native American and I live here? What do you want to do? I'm asking G.G. Galloway that question. I'm a general contractor. You know, if you build something right at ground level, you do not have to have a county permit, as long as it doesn't come off above the ground. You can put any slab you want down anytime you want. I'm talking to you, G.G. Galloway, because you just said something that got me burnt. I know the laws. I can move any day I want, anywhere I want, and I can rent anywhere I want. What do you need my address for? I'm a general contractor. You don't like me using a paintbrush? You don't like me moving my hand? I've been a general contractor since I was 17 years old. I started writing songs when I was 16. You know why I gave you pauses? So you can think about what I said. Thank you, Ormond Beach. I'm a homeless man because of Ormond Beach and G.G.
Okay, we move on to the approval of the minutes for the November 4, 2025 City Commission meeting, have been sent to the commission for review and posted to the city's website. Does anyone have any corrections or changes? Moving to approval. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favors, by saying aye? Aye. Okay, that is unanimous approval for the minutes. We're going to move on to seven. The following item is community redevelopment item. The city commission serves as the community redevelopment agency of the city and must review this item and make a recommendation in the CRA. Therefore, we will recess the city commission meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. I will now open the public hearings. Madam Secretary, please read the title, 7A.
Resolution Number 2025-180, a resolution of the city commission also acting as the community redevelopment agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, accepting a proposal from Drudging and Marine Consultants LLC to provide professional engineering services regarding the Fortunato Park Pier and Gazeebo Repair Project, authorizing the execution of a work authorization thereto and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2025-180, read by title only.
Move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Does anybody want the city engineer to come up and speak on the item?
Yes, please.
Okay. Alex, can you please come up, the city engineer?
Good evening. Alex Schuman, city engineer. So this is a proposal for the design of the Fortunato fishing pier. It was initially constructed in 1997. We've had a couple inspections following Hurricane Milton that have determined that the pilings, for the most part, as well as much of the structure of the pier, is deteriorated and beyond repair. So this is for the design of the replacement of the Fortunato pier.
Thank you, Alex. So I have a question for you. Once we are done with this engineer report, how much time will it take before we go into the construction phase of this thing? And when do you see that being complete?
So we anticipate having construction-ready plans by March for the Find Grant Florida Inland Navigation District. inland navigation district.
If the repair, if the damage is greater than 50%, then you basically have to conform to the new code, right? Because when it was built in 97, the code has obviously changed to now. Okay, so that's what we're essentially facing here is because it was determined by a professional that it's greater than 50% damage right now to repair it in its current, the way it's currently built?
Correct.
Okay. All right, just trying to understand and follow this, though. But I understand the not conforming and conforming with the 50%. Sean, did you want to say something?
I think Alex has covered it.
Okay.
If there's any questions, I can answer. Just to kind of add to what Alex has given you, in order to get a building permit, we would need plans that are signed and sealed by a registered professional engineer in the state of Florida. To assume that the engineer who did those plans 30 years ago would want to re-sign those is probably a little bit wishful thinking. I don't know that we would get that. And an engineer would have to rerun calculations, would have to review those plans, in order to be able to, per Florida statute, be able to sign those, sign and seal those plans. So I think it's a, you know, it's an admirable thought, but it's not one that Florida statute allows the registered professional engineers to do. We have seen very high costs from our consultants. We had a proposal just two weeks ago for a water main replacement that I was absolutely aghast at the fees that we saw. And when we received that, I spoke to Alex and the engineers, the project manager, and said, this is, this is one that we could, that other project was one that we can do in-house. The engineers have their own areas of specialization. We do not have engineers on staff who are specialized in structural design. I, as a registered professional engineer, I am sworn and have a license that requires me to do my job to benefit and to ensure public health and safety. And so taking the step of having a registered professional engineer do this design is the step that responsibly we should take. I understand this is a long timeline. Part of that is in order to get the FINE grant, which I think is a fiscally responsible effort on ours to take. If the direction is to get this done as quickly as possible, we can look for other ways to fund this other than through a FINE grant. Sounds like the design will be done March, April. That would allow us to put it out to bid at that time, which would help expedite it a little bit. But, you know, looking for ways to help stretch every dollar that we have, we were looking to the FINE grant, which is the most likely, and for us to be able to get here, and we've had experience with it. You know, hopefully, that respectfully provides you a little bit more information than, but Alex certainly has given you some as well.
Well, going back to what Commissioner Sargent said, though, is that, you know, I got to agree. What took so long for us to get here at this point from when the pier did close?
So it's this FINE grant process. We make an application in March, and they take till October to award it. So that's where FINE is covering 50% of the cost of design for this pier, and so that's, that's what's taking the significant amount of time.
Question. Will the FINE grant also help with the build? I know it's helping with the design, but 50%?
50%.
And do we have an idea of what that cost is going to be for the whole rebuild? Or is that just congestion? I mean, do we have any ideas?
Well, yeah, so we have to, do we have to send that for RFP for the build? Actual build after we do the design?
We don't go out to bid.
Yeah, okay. So depending on what the RFP would be, it would depend on what the cost is. But it'll be a 50% match, though, with the grant that we were granted. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Alex? No? Okay. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
I don't have any cards here from the public to speak on the item. So we have a motion and a second. I will have the city clerk please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
No.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Breyly?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. I will now close the public hearings and reconvene the city commission meeting. We'll move on to consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are deemed routine and non-controversial. The action proposed is stated for each item. Unless the city commission removes an item from the consent agenda, no discussion on individual items will occur, and a single motion will approve all items. Does any member of the commission wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none? Oh, wait a minute.
I'd like to pull items 8A and B.
Oh, 8A and 8B, you said? 8A, 8B? Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Same.
Okay, same. Any other items?
Move approval of the consent agenda minus items A and B.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Breyly?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. Okay. City clerk, can you please read 8A, resolution number 2025-180?
Resolution number 2025-180, a resolution of the city commission also acting as the community redevelopment agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, accepting a proposal from dredging and marine consultants LLC to provide professional engineering services regarding the Fortunato Park Pier and gazebo repair project, authorizing the execution of a work authorization thereto and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2025-180, read by title only.
Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? I know, okay, commis, no? All right. Deputy Mayor, you want to speak on it?
Most of my comments were in the CRA portion, so I just wanted, I guess the comment really is, it really has taken a long time for us to get to this point. And I don't know if there were any other grants that we could have looked at sooner. It's just frustrating, you know, how slow government is, that's all.
Doodle to that. Commissioner Breyly?
I guess my only comment would be, once this is done, everything, if we could just somehow possibly expedite the process to get it done, that's all.
Can we accommodate on that? All right, see the nod over there? Good. Any other discussion? No? Seeing none. City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Breyly?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
No.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. City clerk, can you please read item 8B, resolution number 2025-181?
Resolution number 2025-181, a resolution accepting a proposal from dredging and marine consultants LLC to provide professional engineering design services regarding the Riviera Park Pier and gazebo repair project, authorizing the execution of a work authorization thereto and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2025-181, read by title only.
Motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. I'm going to have Alex come up here because I did have a question for Alex. And you said just a few minutes ago that the Fortunato Park, you know, we were waiting for a grant, and that's what slowed down this whole process? And now Riviera Park, is the process slow on this because we applied for the grant also? And is that why we're here this long, even though we didn't get the grant?
Correct.
Okay.
So construction on this will proceed much, much quicker.
Okay. What's the timeline on that?
Again, this one is going to be tracking about the same for design, design complete, March or April. We can apply again for a FINE grant for construction for that same timeline, or we can proceed directly to bidding and construction and have it under construction, you know, by summer.
Okay. Well, we don't have any grants for this that we're not going to get, right? So?
We don't for design.
For design, okay.
We can reapply again for construction.
Okay, so we can get the design moving yesterday, and then from there, we'll put the RFP out and then apply for the grant, and then, okay.
Bid, correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Alex?
I just have a comment. Does it seem odd to you that both of the signs, and I'm not picking on you, are exactly both $86,000 when they're two different projects? I'm just wondering if they're just like, oh, we got $86,000 for this one, let's, let's go for it on this one as well. I'm just curious.
There's a lot of the same time involved with permitting and the length of the design. You know, there's some, they're going to have to set up the same number of sheets and the drawings and do some of the same calculations. It's a little bit, not quite, you know, copy paste to extend the length of the pier, but it's a similar idea.
So a lot of overlap is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
What's the age of the pier? Is it the same age as?
This one is roughly the same, yeah.
Roughly the same age. Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you. Once again, I'm just frustrated that here we are, pushing it down the road, it's going to take forever, just like Andy Romano Park. You know, we have these facilities that are damaged by hurricanes, and it just seems like they drag on. Andy Romano Park, the taxpayers chose to tax themselves for that park. And it's been closed for how long now? And here we have piers that are, I understand that we're applying for grants and stuff, but, I mean, to me, it's pretty, I want to choose my words carefully. I'm not happy with the timeline at all on these projects, when the one is on one of our four corners of the bridge, where people walk by it every day, and, you know, I get calls all the time about these projects, what are we doing? It's kind of embarrassing when you keep saying, oh, we're going to the design phase. We're just now going to design phase, and then we're not looking at construction until
So I assume that whoever inspected this pier determined that there's more than 50% damage?
Correct.
I got to tell you, I got to agree with the deputy mayor. I was kind of fishy at the design, it's the same price for both piers. I don't understand that, but I guess they measure it by linear feet, or how they measuring the estimate on this thing, or the time? I mean, I just...
So, like I said, the number of plans, plan sheets, and the permitting process will be the same regardless of the length of the pier?
And it did take a long time, attributed from Hurricane Milton. That was a while ago. I get a lot of calls about this, and the Fortunato. When is this going to open? The sign's been closed forever. It's a shame. Any other discussion here from the commission? Seeing none? All right, thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Breyly?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
No.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Okay. Do any of the commissioners wish to comment on any other items on the consent agenda at this time? No? Seeing none? Okay. Take your time, hurry up. Okay, we're going to move on to the public hearings. I will now open the public hearings. City clerk, please read the legal title for 9A, ordinance number 2025-35.
Ordinance number 2025-35, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, Article 2, District Regulations, Section 2-42, Design Standards of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code, Building Design Standards to be consistent with Section 163.3202, Florida statutes regarding residential building design elements, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2025-35, read by title only.
Is there a motion for approval? So move.
Second.
Stephen Spraker, could you please come up and speak on the item?
Good evening. Stephen Spraker, planning director with the city. Section 2-42 of the Land Development Code contains residential design standards. There's a Florida statute section that preempts local governments from enacting building design standards for single-family structures, so we're seeking to make our Land Development Code consistent with the Florida statutes. Homeowners associations can still have their regulations separate of the city, but the city cannot regulate the design standard for single-family residential homes. Planning board did recommend approval. Staff is available if there are any questions.
Mr. Mayor, so Stephen, this is probably just a housekeeping issue.
Correct. And there are a couple, on the next couple agendas that are Florida statute basis. Yep.
Thank you, Stephen. Oh, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah. Does this have anything to do with the discussion with the modular homes, design discussion that I had with you before?
It's based on that. It's not directly with the modular homes, but basically, the city can't regulate the building design.
Cleaning up all of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Stephen? Seeing none. Thank you, Stephen. And I do not have any cards for public comment, so I will have the city clerk please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Breyly?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. City clerk, can you please read the legal title for ordinance number 2025-36?
Ordinance number 2025-36, an ordinance amending Chapter 1, General Administration, Article 3, Definitions and Acronyms, Section 1-22, Definition of Terms and Words of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code, to amend the principal structure definition and Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, Article 3, General Regulation, Section 2-50, Accessory Uses Subsection O, Garages of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code, to amend the maximum size of detached garages allowed for properties two acres or greater in size to 100% of the total square footage of the principal structure, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2025-36, read by title only.
A motion for approval?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Steven, can you please come up again? And speak on the item.
Good evening again, Steven Spraker, planning director. This is a land development code that was at the directive of the city commission. Our current standards requires a detached garage to be fifty percent of the principal structure. So if I have a two thousand square foot house, the maximum detached garage you could have is a thousand square feet. Those regulations were put in in the early two thousands, as there were a couple properties that had houses, or garages, detached garages, that were bigger than the principal house. So that balance has been in the land development code for a while. The amendment seeks to allow properties that are two acres and greater to have a detached garage that's a hundred percent. So going back to our example, they could have a detached garage of, of two thousand square feet of the principal structure. For the properties that are one point nine nine acres and less, the standard stays the same, there'd be fifty percent of the principal square footage. The planning board recommended approval, I believe the vote was five to two. Staff is available if there are any questions.
So Steven, just what I noticed, though, the amendment expands the definition of principal structure.
It clarifies it, so that, that's what we have been using it, since we were in this amendment area, we thought it would be good to put that in writing, so everyone is on the same page.
Any questions for Steven, deputy mayor?
I have a bunch. So, um, I understand where, where we were, and I'm thinking about when I was on the planning board and, and all the questions. And, and I am a property rights kind of girl, but I also think I have some questions about this. How many, where, where did this originate from? I know it was commission-driven, but are there certain areas in our town that we're, we're looking at? I mean, are these smaller houses on, on two acre lots that are looking for a detached garage that's larger? Let's say you have an eighteen hundred square foot house, and right now you can only put a nine hundred foot garage. Are we, you know, I see where that's okay, or where that might work if you, if you went up to a hundred percent. But let's just say you have a large house, let's say a five thousand square foot house, and then you're gonna be putting another five thousand structure on a two acre lot. That could be really obtrusive to neighbors, so I'm thinking about the neighbors. So are there properties in our town that we're looking at to make these changes?
So the direction for this item came from the commission, I believe it was August third. So I don't know the whole backstory of, of, you know, I think Commissioner Barley, he could probably speak to it. But basically, I think the thought process was, if I have a two acre lot, I have a lot of property, I could build a principal structure of that fi, of that five thousand square feet in your example. I could do that by right. So instead of building another principal structure or adding on, now I do a detached garage. So it really is a policy decision. In the staff report, you know, staff threw out the number of a hundred percent, if you wanna make it less, that's certainly within the commission directive. This was not a staff-initiated amendment, so we're, we're working for the pleasure of the commission.
So when you were speaking with the, the planning board, one of us brought to the planning board, I usually read all the minutes, and I apologize, I did not. I only spoke to a member. Was there any discussion with limiting it on size of the house? So let's say if you're on a two acre house, two acre in your property, your primary property is two thousand square foot or less, or was there any discussion with the size of the house as well? Or no?
No, it's really based on the size of the lot, with the theory that, once you get over two acres, you have a large lot that could accommodate additional structures.
Yeah. Okay.
It says here that sheds that are over a hundred fifty square feet are classified as garages--
Yes, sir.
--within this land development code, this new land development code? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that, so that's what I mean, no for me. Any other questions?
I think, um, just for clarification, I had brought this up, I was, I was approached by a constituent. And, and Commissioner Talland, to your, to your point, we could, I mean, if, if, if you, if we have concerns, and somebody says, somebody has a five thousand square foot house, maybe you, you get to a limit of, if your house is five thousand square feet, or whatever that magic number is, then you revert back to the fifty percent, so it's not too obtrusive. Typically, two acres, those are pretty large, large lots. In a situation where somebody has, and a lot of these, in the area this particular constituent lives, you have a lot of smaller homes on large lots. So let's just say you have a fifteen hundred square foot house, you can only build a seven hundred fifty foot detached garage under our current code. So, um, I, I kinda looked at it with, with such large lots, a lot of times you, a lot of times you pass by these things, there's, there's, I know of a couple on the gentleman's street, and you pass by it, and you don't even, you don't even recognize or know that there's a workshop next to the house. So that was pretty much my point, if, if, if there's any sort of desire to say, anything up to a certain size, if you wanna go, you know, seventy-five percent or fifty percent from that, I think that would be okay. But it's really, I think, I thought it was kind of punitive to have someone who maybe who has even a two thousand square foot house, which is not a real big house on two acres, that they couldn't do a similar sized garage, detached garage.
I, I appreciate you explaining where, where it derived from. And I, I do understand with a smaller house, with a larger lot, I think my, my bigger, my concern, I probably would like staff to come back with maybe some gradual percentages with, I know it's complicated, I hate to complicate issues. But I, I do see where there might be a thing where you might have two acres in, in a, I'm just saying, five thousand square foot house. That would be a lot of building--
Now, yeah.
--on two acres.
Now, remember, you could do, say you had a three thousand square foot house, you could build a three thousand square foot garage that's attached to the house, and you never know that was a garage.
This is detached, though?
This is detached. And the problem you get into is, the, some of the problems these folks find with doing an attached garage, your insurance goes through the roof on an attached garage, so.
I would, I would be curious to see what Kristen and Travis think about this as well. Thanks.
I do have a card here for a public comment, so you guys can speak before or after, wherever you want, on that. Okay, if you guys wanna go to public comment real quick, and you guys can speak on--
Yeah, you can do the public comment, then I'll speak, that's fine.
Okay, could I have a Ralph Coats come up?
Good evening, Ralph Coats, seven thirty-three Santa Fe Ave. I wanna put a separate detached garage next to the house, I'm eighteen hundred and ninety-one square foot. It's R2 zoning, I'm allowed to do it if I add on to the home. Financially, that's not doable for me. Insurance-wise, it's not doable. It's like a small rule that, I can do it if I spend a lot of money, I don't have it. You know, I've been in the community, Ormond Beach, fifty years, I've worked at Melor Depot, twenty-eight years. I've been given to the community, I just need a little tweak in the rule. I don't know that there's properties my size, a whole lot of them left in Ormond Beach. That end of the street backs up to the railroad tracks. We're about three hundred square foot short of what the rule allows. Just asking for a blessing to kind of look at this in a financial, man's working every day. I need my space. Trying to keep honest people honest, I'd like to be able to put my equipment away at night and lock it. Hurricanes, I'd like to be able to put my stuff in shelter and lock it. You'll let me build a two-sided, closed, two-open, as big as I want, which isn't fair to my neighbors. Wind gets under it, throws it on a neighbor. I don't see where that makes as much common sense as it does to, to look at this individually. You know, that whole end of the street was changed, when I bought the home, it was county. I literally built the house on that side, knowing one day the kids will move out, and I'll have a garage. They're moved out, I'm trying to move on. I really just wanna keep honest people honest, keep them out of the yard. We've had a lot of door handles lifted in, in the neighborhood. I don't call the police every time that happens, you know, put gates up, fencing. But you got Publix back there, you've got the Arches, the homeless are just cruising around at night. I'd just like to be able to lock my door, lock my stuff up, and go to sleep knowing I've done the best I could do.
Thank you, Ralph.
I don't think there's a whole lot of properties that size out there that are gonna cause a problem for the, for the neighborhoods. There are five buildings on my street now, they're allowed to build because they have big homes. I'm not able to do that. You know, forty hours a week, doing the best I can, I just need a common sense yes to me, without insulting anybody. It just looks like a common sense yes.
Commissioner Deaton, I think, had a comment.
Okay, this is gonna sound ignorant, but I have not worked in insurance in quite some time. Can you explain to me the difference between the insurance aspect as being attached versus detached?
Yes, when it's, when it's attached to your home, you have to insure all of it.
Okay. And you don't have to insure other structures?
Correct. I don't have to insure the garage, it's not attached to the home. Our insurance now is, it's eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred square foot, it, it's thirty-six hundred dollars a year, just keeps going up. I don't see where that is gonna stop. Government, that ain't gonna stop, they, they've got their hands in so many other things, I don't know that that's gonna stop. You know, the property taxes, they go up a little bit each year as well. Cost of living, I mean, I'm struggling, you know, it's, it's a dream.
Thank you for coming out, Ralph.
All right, thanks.
All right. All right, we have to go back to discussion here.
So, I, I'm torn, I'm not quite sure, I don't wanna see a bunch of two thousand square foot houses and two thousand square foot detached garages, but I would love to bless this guy, I don't, I'm, I'm torn on it. I also look at it as, from the mortgage, mortgage aspect, as somebody who knows that there are certain guidelines where your detached garage cannot be worth more than your house, otherwise it might cause a mortgage issue. I, I don't know, I'm torn.
Commissioner Sargent?
I'm a yes on it, and I don't think we have too many more lots in Ormond Beach that are two acres, that this is really gonna affect, and I, I think it's kind of like, to me, I mean, hate to bring it up, Anthony's gone, but I think it's the tat, like the tattoo part, they're putting these guidelines on it, I, I, I don't see how I can not vote for it, so I'm a yes on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Barley?
And I don't think you see a whole lot of two acre lots within, kind of like, what I would call Ormond Beach proper, a lot of them are kind of on the outskirts of Ormond Beach, I mean, they're still within the city limits, but I'm thinking like, Durrance Acres, the, well, some of it's, some of it's still in the city of Ormond Beach. So, you know, you think about two acre lots, those are pretty good sized lots. And, and I'm glad staff brought at least two acres or greater back to us, rather than, say, you know, even one or an acre and a half.
So there, there was no magic to the hundred percent. So if you wanna drop it to a percentage lower than a hundred percent, you could probably still achieve the goal that this resident is looking for, and maybe resolve some of the concerns of, you know, equal, equal to the house. So you could do sixty, seventy, seventy-five percent, you could come up with some other number that may still work.
Would that make more sense than going by size of house, square footage of house, and, and changing the percentage that way? I mean, I, I sympathize, I think when you have a smaller house, and I think you have a lot of toys, or tractors and things, you're trying to hide it and put it in a structure, I, I hear what he's saying, and I, I would like to accommodate that. I just, I just, and I don't know how, that was my question, how many properties do we have like this that could have a huge house on it, you know, that could have another huge, huge detached? So what, what do you think would be, I won't say easier, but cleaner? A percentage, a strict percentage, or go by size of the house? I'm not sure where I'm at.
Right, so you could drop the hundred percent down to seventy-five percent or seventy, and, you know, if you wanna establish a maximum size of garage. But the danger with that is, there are other structures that can be built that will get to that cumulative maximum, right? You could do a detached accessory dwelling unit, you could do a carport, as you referenced.
When this was brought up, was it brought up at the dais, or was this brought up at a workshop? I mean, how did this even come up about?
During, yeah, commissioner comments.
Closing comments, okay. I'm sorry, Commissioner Deaton?
You're fine, okay, so to address deputy mayor, so this gentleman right here, his total building square footage is tw- two thousand fifty square feet, I just pulled it up, and that's his total living area, not his, I mean, that's his total building area, not his living area. And you wanted nineteen eighty-one, I think is what he said, we couldn't really do a percentage, because he's not gonna be able to get what he's after. If that's what we're trying to appease, is him, and he's just doing, it's, it would need to be the hundred percent for him.
And you know what, I'm reading here even the staff notes here, and I'm just gonna read what it says here, that the city commission's direction did not specify the maximum allowance for the detached garage structure. If there is a desire for a percentage other than a hundred percent of the principal structure for the detached garage, for lots, properties, two acres and greater, an amendment would be needed. So to me, like, I, I think that, like, the way I feel about it is, like, there's still kind of a little slippery slope for me on this one. You know, unless we wanna go back and maybe have a workshop on it, maybe talk a little more, give a little more direction on exactly what we want, I'm gonna be a no vote on this. But if you guys wanna table it and have a discussion at a workshop, and get this maybe a little more clarified, I would feel a little more comfortable with it. Even like in here, it says that sheds that are over a hundred fifty square feet are classified as garages. And I'm like, you know, it's just, I'm not, I'm not there yet with it.
Could I ask Mr. Coats one more question?
Sure.
Are you stuck on the nineteen eighty-one? Or is there any wiggle room there? Was that the square footage you set out, I apologize?
The, the home is eighteen hundred and ninety-one, I believe.
Okay, total building area, well, I guess--
The garage is thirty by forty, twelve hundred square--
And what was the square footage you're looking for, for your detached garage?
Twelve hundred, it's thirty by forty.
Okay, so-- we could do a percentage, but I'm, I'm not necessarily a no, I'm just, I need to think.
And like I said--
Is he, is he--
I need to do some math.
The carports are allowed as big as you want, it doesn't make any sense.
Can you, can you follow up with him then, on it, or do you want--
Well, he and I have been following up on this all together, and I, I, again, I don't have any problem, listen, you're talking about two acre lots. How many two acre lots do you have in the city of Ormond Beach? Not a whole lot. And again, you start looking at setbacks on two acre lots, if you put two five thou, just say it was five thousand square foot, you're gonna have plenty of setback, that's two acres.
So it doesn't compromise the setbacks, you still have to have the same setbacks, correct?
You still have to have the setbacks.
So the same, same buffer will be around for the neighbors and the whole thing, it's just what's in the middle? Okay.
Commissioner Deaton, you said you had a number?
I did the math, sixty-three point four percent, sixty-three point five percent is what he's looking for. Sorry, that's my thing. If we wanted to look at a lesser amount, that is the percentage from eighteen ninety-one to twelve hundred, if we would like to look at a lesser amount.
Well, it says in here that, you know, we would have to make an amendment to that, 'cause we're at a hundred percent right now?
Yeah.
I would be willing to make amendment to seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five? Did you wanna address the detached garage situation, though?
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't like it, I mean--
Why is that in there? Why did we add the shed?
Yeah, why did we add the shed?
Verbiage for detached garage?
So there are several, so a shed is seven and a half feet to the property line, whereas a detached garage is twenty feet. So there's a greater setback for a garage versus a shed. So if you wanna build a structure that is larger, you have a larger setback.
That's actually positive, that's good.
And, and that has been in the code since at least two thousand and four.
That's actually a positive thing, because it would be further away from the--
Right, so you don't wanna build large structures right on the, on the--
Yeah.
Close to the property line, so, and you can have multiple sheds. So if you're under, if you're ten thousand square feet or under, you can have two sheds, and then it graduates up. So you can have two sheds of a hundred fifty square feet at seven and a half, but you combine it, you get a larger structure, it needs to meet the principal building setbacks.
All right, one other thought, we used to, we always get these exceptions, why don't we just treat this as a, as an exception?
Great question. So this isn't eligible for a board of adjustment variance. It's not in the section where they can have variance, and quite honestly, there's not a hardship. So because somebody wants a larger house, it doesn't meet the hardship criteria, the variance criteria.
So to do this, we have to change--
Yeah, to amend the land development code, yep.
Okay.
Sure, Commissioner Sargent, wanna say something?
So there's houses on North Beach Street, let's say, that are ten thousand square feet on an acre property. And here, we're talking about two thousand square feet with a two thousand square feet detached garage on two acres. I mean, just think of that, what you could build on one acre, a five to eight thousand square foot house. But we're worried about, and there's not many two acre lots within the city limits, and we're worried about an eighteen hundred square foot house and an eighteen hundred square foot garage. I understand that we're looking down the road, too, there's other options, but just think of that for a second, that there's, if you look at some of the houses along the river, that are more than eight thousand square feet on less than an acre, and we're talking about two acres. on less than an acre, and we're talking about two acres here, just to throw that out there as I.
But to appease, this gentleman right here only needs sixty-three point four percent. Why don't we settle at seventy-five and appease everybody?
Well, can I?
Please.
You start doing something like that, you're looking at, you're, and MR, correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking, you're looking at spot zoning, potentially. If you're doing something to benefit just one person that is specific, I mean, we can make it what we want to. Don't get me wrong. I don't think we should just use one example, though, is what I'm saying. You, you, you set it citywide for the betterment of, right.
Correct, correct, but if I'm having concerns over a hundred percent, but I feel better about seventy-five percent.
And that's fine, but I don't think you, we shouldn't just use one.
I, I understand that, not just using, but it would help the situation that you brought to the commission because of, and help alleviate some of our concerns.
What about making a motion for seventy-five percent, then?
Second.
Well, we already had a motion on the table, so we have to amend that motion.
Okay, I think I made the motion, so I'll amend my motion to seventy-five percent of the principal structure.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Any questions for Stephen or anyone else? No? Okay, city clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
No. Okay, we're gonna move on to Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-Five One Eighty-Seven. Please read the, the legal title.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-Five Dash One Eighty-Seven, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a special exception development order for a house of worship regarding First United Methodist Church located at three three six South Halifax Drive within the R dash two single-family low-density zoning district to allow for the demolition of the existing gathering building and construction of a new gathering building with associated site improvements. The repeal and replacement of Resolution Ninety-three Dash Thirty-eight in its entirety, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution, Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-Five Dash One Eighty-Seven, read by title only.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Stephen Spraker, could you please speak on the item?
Good evening. Stephen Spraker, planning director. This is a request for a special exception at three three six South Halifax Drive, shown in blue on that aerial. The property has a zoning of R two. Within the R two zoning district, a house of worship is a special exception use. So, as they change the site and as they add square footage, it requires a public hearing through the special exception process. In nineteen ninety-three, the, the church went through a similar process, added the building on, would be my right, the orange building. The blue building is the building that's being demolished under this application proposed to be. That development order was very detailed. It will be removed in its entirety if approved. Staff noted that that special exception did not require a wall around the property, which will be important in a second. The new building is pulled away from the residential lots. There is a fence along the boundary, and there's also establishment of a landscape buffer, which is not there today on the property. There is a neighborhood meeting that was conducted on April ninth. The site planning review committee conducted a determination meeting on September twenty-fourth. There were two key issues. One is the setbacks that are being requested, and the second is a wall waiver. If you recall, the applicant went through a land development code amendment to allow setbacks less than a hundred linear feet from residential. So, they're proposing thirty-three feet to the portico share and then fifty-eight feet to the building. Both those setbacks are larger than what exists today, so they are pulling the building further away from the residential area. This is their wall waiver request. Typically, the land development code requires masonry wall next to residential. The blue area in the exhibit is a six-foot vinyl fence. The green area is a retaining wall with a PVC fence on top. Again, we noted that there was no wall required with the original special exception. It looked like because it was a house of worship, there was not a requirement for the wall. There's also benefits of better drainage and less impacts of tree roots for a PVC fence versus a masonry wall. This is a exhibit that was prepared by the applicant that shows the retaining wall and the PVC vinyl fence. It helps to maintain the drainage. There'll be a weep hole where the water can go through the retaining wall. These are the architectural elevations for the house of worship. The planning board did recommend approval of the applicant, application, and the applicant is here to address the commission. Staff's available for any questions.
Hey, we have any questions for Stephen? So, you're none? Thank you, Stephen. And are the, are you represented from Cobb Cole?
Yes.
Okay.
For the record, Jessica Gallow, Cobb Cole. Address is one Daytona Boulevard in Daytona Beach, Florida. I do just have two slides, so we will be brief, as lawyers love to say. My joke that I told planning board that I will share with you guys is that the original development team for this special exception in nineteen ninety-three was Cobb Cole and Zev Cohen. Tonight, you have Cobb Cole and Zev Cohen, although I was not alive in nineteen ninety-three, so it was not me. It was Rob Merrill back then.
Consider yourself lucky.
You said it, not me. So, the special exception, the church, of course, has been around since prior to nineteen ninety-three. That was when they came forward with the new sanctuary, which they still call the new sanctuary, just about thirty years or so later. The gathering building that we're looking at here today, the property appraiser has it in the late nineteen sixties, so well over fifty years old. And while the scope of services for the site are not changing, they're just a little cramped in their existing buildings and looking for an upgrade here. This slide kinda narrows the focus then on the actual new building here. Halifax is at the north orientation on this view, just so that we can look there. Like Stephen noted, the setbacks are getting further away. The original building that exists now is about twenty feet. We're moving it closer to where the lot, its regular shape bumps back in the rear, to where that stormwater pond is. And we did go through that process almost exactly a year ago in October twenty twenty-four to allow modifications of that setback through the special exception process. Then, second slide is just to show that fencing diagram that Stephen showed and to show the pictures of the existing property line. So, you can see there's kind of a range. There's some chain link in some areas, there's some overgrowth in others, and we think that having a cohesive fencing along the perimeter of the site would be a huge improvement. You'll have that landscape buffer. And the, the true nature of the retaining wall, which is about three feet, and then that opaque vinyl on top, is to allow water to flow through that retaining wall and to preserve an existing gate access that one of the adjacent residents has, that we are maintaining the general location of. I think it shifted over a tiny bit in design, but we wanna make sure that they can use that gate because they've historically used it. And so, with that, I think those are the highlights, and we are here for any questions. I do have Sean Mead with Zev Cohen, if you have engineering or stormwater questions.
My one question is that how long do you expect the construction project to go on for in completion?
It's a great question. I think the, the church would love to say immediately, and it will be done within a year. I would say probably twelve to eighteen months is a typical process. That's just a.
Just wondering for, just in case residents ask.
Sure.
Any questions for Cobb Cole? Commissioner Bryley?
Commissioner Sargent?
Sergeant, okay, I'm sorry.
I don't feel like I'm hitting punk ball. Parking.
Yep.
How is this gonna affect parking? Because I went to this church, I grew up in this church, and I remember when the new sanctuary was built, we had park and ride, where we had to park where Salty is and ride a bus over, and I remember that was pretty chaotic. So, I'm just kinda curious on how parking is.
So, the parking shift from the current layout to the new building does not change the overall parking number of spaces? They've remained the same, and they're above code standards for the house of worship?
Thank you. Great. Any other questions? Nope. Okay.
I just have more a, a comment than a question. Scott, I'd be lying to you if I didn't tell you, there's a little bit of me that wants to say no, only because this is the church. My parents are married, my aunt, my uncle, both, both my dad's siblings are married in this church. I was christened in the old sanctuary. It's gonna be tough to see it go. It's gonna be a sad day, but I, I, I'll be voting in favor of this and wish you luck.
It had a very good life and a lot of great memories.
So, I have a couple of questions. So, masonry wall versus vinyl fence, that was always a big topic in the planning. We're suggesting the vinyl fence for protecting for the wa, protecting the trees, is that why?
Yes.
Because when you do masonry, we have to go down deep?
Yeah, so there's really two reasons. One, I think the masonry wall has a larger footprint, so it has larger impacts on the tree roots and systems on the site. The second is that because we have to have that three-foot retaining wall, if we have a three-foot retaining wall and you've moved five feet over, and then you have a six-foot masonry wall, water is not flowing between those two very well. And so, the vinyl fencing allows water to free flow by being on top of that retaining wall and allowing that piping, and then where the retaining wall is not, allowing gaps in the fencing.
And can you see any residents housing behind there? Is it, or is it so heavily wooded? I haven't been there in a long time.
It's pretty dense. I'm gonna see if I can try to make this go backwards.
I think last time I went there was a funeral, and I wasn't looking in the back.
There you go. Yeah, so that's kind of the perimeter of the site. You can see in the rear there, so there's a lot of heavy vegetation existing.
And then, and then obviously, the use is good. I mean, who want, who doesn't want a, a nice new church in your community? So, I appreciate that, that they're trying to make it better and more welcoming to the community. The setbacks, one hundred feet rear and side is what is recom, was what in our ordinances, but we're gonna go to thirty-three feet on the side and fit, down to fifty-eight in the rear? Well, the, I'm just worried about the residents. I have, we're at the neighborhood meeting. Did any of the residents complain? I know there was one that wanted the gate because they wanted to be able to walk in, walk to church again.
They will keep that gate, and on the setback review, the current gathering building is about twenty feet off the property line because it existed before the special exception requirements. And so, that's why when we started the process, kind of with that action in October of last year, it was that even though it was non-conforming at that distance, your code didn't have flexibility to say, and because this is old and came in at that distance, then we can look at a modified distance. So, it just had that hundred.
And then, the other question is about stormwater management. You know, how is that gonna affect the residents behind? You know, I heard you mention a retaining, a retention pond. Are there other infrastructure pieces that are going in to protect?
So, the current system will remain in place. So, there's the stormwater pond that's located along Fleuhart, and then there's a stormwater pond in the rear of the property where it kind of goes back to the residents. At the planning board hearing, Buck James, who you're all probably familiar with from the community, he lives adjacent to the site, and he testified that he is actually the designated person to go check the levels of those ponds after storm events. So, after Ian and Nicole, he noted they were full, but they've never exceeded their capacity. And so, the existing design of the site seems to be performing very well.
So, we, Sean, we've never had any flooding in that area, to your knowledge, right? Any hotspots? That's not one?
No, there's very, there's good drain soil there. I mean, it, it's, it's a natural for a dry retention area, so.
Okay.
I think that the design that was done thirty years ago by Zev Cohen in office has held up, and, and I would expect that getting it permitted through St. John's River Water Management District, the review the city staff does will maintain, will make sure, again, with all of our stormwater, you wanna make sure that you're pre, pre and your post-match. And so.
Right.
They will make sure that whatever, probably the conditions that you see today will be the conditions a year from now once this is done.
Thank you.
And I will note, just because the planning board asked, the piping and the existing drainage structure has not been touched for thirty-five years, and so getting that revamped will probably help in terms of maintenance.
Improve it, yeah. Thank you so much, Jessica.
We appreciate everything, you know, because I think the big concern while we're asking that is because we have people that'll say, the residents, that ever since this was built, I flood, so it's good to really clear the air on that one.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Cobb Cole? I, I have, okay, go ahead.
Just a comment. Thank you. I love the growth of this. If we can just incorporate some native plants, I can't believe you didn't say it, Deputy Mayor Talland, but some native plants along the back or in the front would be great. Thank you.
I, I trained you well. I don't need to say it anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we have a card here from public comment, and at this time, I'll call up a Scott Colleton. If I said it wrong, I'm sorry.
It's Colleton, Scott Colleton. I live at three three one Riverside Drive, I believe. I'm being impacted by the church. So, my comment was, I know they're gonna do the church, and I, I'm fine with all that and the setbacks and all that. My concern is the stormwater. I know it's gonna come on my property, and they have pumps to drain it off, and I know pumps fail, and it's not gonna affect my structure at all. So, I'm not really concerned about that part of it. I'm concerned more about the fencing. If they're gonna do a, say, a white vinyl fence around this whole property, that would look pretty crappy to me, I think, from my property, my perspective, looking at that. I don't have that in my yard. I don't want it in my yard. If they do a vinyl fence, maybe they could do a color or something, you know, so it's not so blatant. And I agree, they're gonna do some nice landscaping and stuff, and I'm all for that, and they're gonna give you that gate access, and I'm all for it. So, I just would like to make a comment that if we could get something a little nicer than vinyl.
Commissioner? Oh, yes, well, I think.
Could we do a brown fence on the back so it blended in better instead of a white?
Oh, yeah, anything, I don't, you know, just something not, you know, a plastic white fence.
Or would you be happy with heavy vegetation?
I don't mind vegetation either. The vegetation's gonna be there. You know, the way they have it designed, but the fence itself is gonna be on my, looking at, I'm gonna look at the fence, basically.
You know, Scott, what I'll do is, do you have anything else you wanna add to this? Because if you don't, I'm just gonna have the representative from Cobb Cole come back up and then maybe answer some of our concerns.
Okay.
All right? Do you have anything else you wanna say, or is that?
No, that was, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Again, for the record, Jessica Gallow, Cobb Cole, one Daytona Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida. The planning board also said they would prefer not white because it's very bright and it kinda has some staining. I got the head nod officially that we could look at brown or a different color alternative for that opaque vinyl.
Okay. And the, you know, we're talking about flooding again, possible flooding, you know, and you addressed the drainage would be up to par and would have no impact to the residents anywhere nearby with flooding and drainage problems, correct?
Yeah, and I think for the record, because he's here, we can have Sean Mead come up with Zev Cohen and just give a high overview of the drainage, so that you've got it for the record from the engineer.
Okay. And just for the record, your name and your title and what you do.
Sean Mead with Zev Cohen Associates, project engineer, 300 Interchange Boulevard, Ormond Beach, Florida. The stormwater system for the site, as Jessica explained, we're utilizing the existing retention ponds that are out there. They're performing well. The original design has held up through the years. We are reconfiguring the site, and the goal of that was to keep the site as it is, not increase the impervious, which we've done. The impervious on the site has actually gone down, so we've reduced the total amount of pavement, sidewalk, building coverage. So those ponds will perform better based off of that. Additionally, the existing stormwater lift station pump that currently takes water, if you can see on that bottom right picture, the area behind the existing building dips down a little bit below grade, and that collects stormwater there, takes it to the stormwater lift station and pumps it to the ponds. That current area will be raised up to current grade. That water will be picked up and sent directly to the ponds. And then the stormwater lift station will only serve the off-site runoff that is coming from the adjacent property. So the lift station will be receiving less runoff than it was before, which would help the capacity of that. And then the ponds themselves will receive less runoff due to reduced amount of impervious area.
Will there be any upgrades to the lift station, or is it gonna be the current lift station that's there?
It'll be the current lift station that's there, which was replaced and repaired back, I believe in 2020. New pumps were put in and have been reassessed and maintained since the original pumps and then replaced.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Zev Cohen?
So you said the ponds were built in 2020?
Uh, no, the lift station.
Lift station?
Correct, yes.
So are the ponds dry retention, or are they?
Yes.
So they're not, okay, cause I was gonna say ponds tend to fill in over time, and so I guess we don't have to worry about that, but, you know, maybe, maybe make them a little deeper, you know? But if you would work with the resident, I, that's always my concern with the fence, you know, and how, how that project is going to affect them and, and obviously the stormwater. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Zev Cohen or Cobb Cole? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we don't have any more cards here, and we have a motion and a second on the floor here, so with that said, I will ask the city clerk to call the vote.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. I will now close the public hearings. City clerk, please read the legal title, 10A Ordinance Number 2025-33.
Ordinance Number 2025-33, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 by amending the general fund 001, downtown redevelopment trust fund 104, stormwater utility fund 107, airport fund 108, economic development fund 110, pension contribution pass-through fund 113, finance, financing debt service fund 205, beachfront park bond fund 220, capital improvements fund 301, equipment renewal and replacement fund 302, public safety vehicle and equipment fund 305, transportation improvements fund 308, facilities renewal and replacement fund 317, water and wastewater fund 401, vehicle replacement fund 408, renewal and replacement fund 409, water system impact fee fund 434, wastewater system impact fee fund 435, 2024 water and wastewater bond, bond, fund 446, solid waste fund 460, and ju, and the general liability fund 504, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2025-33, read by title only.
Motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
This is a second reading here. Do we need Kelly McGar to come up and speak on the item? I think we did the last meeting, so we think we're up to speed on that. I don't have any audience cards here. Any discussion here from the commission? No? Okay, city clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. City clerk, please read the legal title, ordinance number 2025-34.
Ordinance Number 2025-34, an ordinance of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, further amending Article I, General Employees Pension Plan of Chapter 16, Pensions and Retirement of the Code of Ordinances, amending Section 16-6 Benefit Amounts and Eligibility, amending Section 16-9 Vesting, Providing for a Benefit Multiplier for Credited Service Earned on or After October 1, 2025, for members hired on or after December 19, 2012, Providing for Severability of Provisions, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Here With, and Providing an Effective Date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2025-34, read by title only.
Move approval.
Second.
Again, second reading. Do we need Kelly McGar to come up and speak on the item? No, I do not have any cards here from the audience. Any, any other discussion? No? City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna move on to report suggestions or requests, and we're gonna start it off with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you all. Just for your general planning purposes, we have our next reger, regular commission meeting scheduled for November 18th, and then you.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm like lost in the wilderness here.
No, it's okay.
December 2nd is your, and 16th are your meeting dates in December. We don't customarily have a second meeting in December, but because it's a long month about how the month starts, we do plan to have two regular meetings on that. We have a number of workshops planned for you in the beginning of the year, including Florida Nova Road update, budget workshop, you know, those will start sometime in March to give you plenty of time to look at that. And then your capital budget workshops will start sometime in May, so, just so that you know where you're going with that. Just a couple of parks and rec items. Magnificent Moss at the EDC ages, children ages five to 11 are invited to learn about Magnificent Moss on November 22nd. Coed volleyball clinic registration will be open. The Casement Guild presents the 47th Annual Christmas Gala on Friday, December 5th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, featuring the tree lighting and Santa's arrival at 6:00 PM. Live entertainment, face painting, et cetera, will be available for everybody to participate in. The 34th Annual Home for the Holidays Parade, A Country Christmas, on Saturday, December 13th, immediately after the Ormond Main Street Tree Lighting at 6:00 PM. Some of you have asked about candy, and there will be candy on the vehicles. Are there any questions that you have for me tonight?
Any questions for Joyce? No? All right, thank you, Joyce.
Thank you very much.
Assistant city manager Sean Finley?
Nothing further. Have a good night.
All right, have a good night. City attorney? Okay. All right, we'll start it off tonight with Commissioner Bryley.
I'll be very brief. I'd like to thank the public for coming out tonight, giving us your input. As always, we appreciate that. I wanna thank staff for all of your hard work and dedication to the city and for putting up with us, and for everyone else and my colleagues and everyone in the room, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Talland?
Thank you so much, so mine is not gonna be so brief. I did give you a break last time, so give me, just gonna have to bear with me. Alan Burton, is he still here? Thanks for speaking on Regrow America, or Regrow Volusia. You know, Nancy Galdo has, with the Ormond Scenic Loop, has been working really diligently on Regrow Volusia, and thank you for shouting out to Troy Kent, cause he did get this started. I was hoping that the commission up here would consider writing a letter or sending a resolution of some sort to promote or to support Regrow Volusia. And that would be a resolution which we're already doing between the city and the county. And I'm not sure exactly how it would be worded, but we have supported it in the, in the past, and I would like to continue that support. So I think what I would need from you all is a yes or no, if that's something you all are interested in doing, formally making that relationship between the county for Regrow Volusia.
How does everyone feel about that?
Fine.
I'm good.
Okay, we're all a yes on that.
All right, so I don't know how to really, how to direct staff, but we'll have to come up with something to, and we'll send it to, to Troy and the, the whole county council of, of that.
Would you like us to bring it back to you first before? I think we need to do that.
Yes.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Also, I, I also received a request to write a letter of endorsement for Friends of Timoca State Park. They're applying for a rec and racing district grant. They're trying to raise funds. They are a private 5013C, I think that's what it's called, private nonprofit, and they're trying to rebuild their docks. So one of the gentlemen, his name is Gordon Whitley, Whitley, he had asked if I could write a letter, but upon talking with legal and with staff, we thought that maybe it would be better if I brought it up to you all, to see if you all are willing to write a letter of support for the Friends of the Timoca State Park in their efforts to get funds for, for their dock.
So they simply just need help getting a grant?
Yes, they just, well, they, they want help. They wanted, you, when you apply for this grant, you put in a lot of letters of endorsement, and they're just looking for endorsement from us, that that's something that we would want.
I don't see any harm in that.
They're not asking us for money or anything like that.
I don't see any harm in that.
I'm good with that. No issues, law's out paving roads.
Oh, dear.
We know about that. I'm okay with it too.
All right, okay, thank you. So it's, if you all don't mind writing another letter of endorsement for that, that would be great. I'll let them know.
Can you just send it back to us so we can review it and prove it?
Do we need a, I don't think that needs to come back.
No? Okay. Okay. Well.
Mayor, that would, it's probably not necessary, and they just need, their deadline is coming up. They're really looking for a letter sooner than later. It simply should state that, you know, the City of Ormond Beach endorses their work and what they're doing.
Okay, did they, did they provide?
They, they provided a sample letter, and I'll be happy to share that with Joyce, and she can share it with you all.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Let's see, the other request is, you know, I'm on that stormwater management mitigation with the county, and I was asked to kinda give an update on that, but I thought was more important was, is what's happening in, within our own city. And so Sean was kind enough to put together a summary of all our current stormwater projects, and I would like Sean to be able to send those to each of you individually, so when you get a letter or an email from a resident, you, you'll know what is going on with that project and where it's at in the process. Sure.
Can we just put a tab on the website as well, so people can just see it?
We, we had a conversation about this at our, at our, at our project meeting this morning. One of the things that I think that we, this gave us a little bit of inspiration, that we need to do, take, step it up a, a whole nother notch with how we convey the status of some of our projects, stormwater being kinda the focus one right now, with all of our capital projects. I think we'd like to do this and put, put, put a tab on our website. So if you give us a little bit of time, I think that we're shooting for first of the year, and so if, if, if that's a timeframe that works for you, I think that that's what we're, we're shooting for, is to be able to get project status, you know, stormwater, parks, utilities, those, those types of projects. That way, people, if people have questions, they have a first place that they can go to, and then, and then also a contact person, specifically the, the project managers on staff. So I think that it's a good idea to be able to get that information out to people. Obviously, the first line of, of defense is, is you all, because I know that you get asked questions, so that's one of the reasons why we put that, that summary together for Commissioner Talland, but, and I will gladly get that to you, but give us about six weeks here, and, and right after the first year, we're hoping to have something in, in a little bit more formalized form to, to be able to do that, but I appreciate your, your, your request, Commissioner.
And thank you, Travis. That's, that's exactly what the next step was going to be, so to increase our transparency. It just will help every, everyone, help us and help the residents. The other important thing I wanted to share with you is, you know, FDOT had a meeting at the casements regarding the new Nova Road project. I, I did attend the project, and FDOT, we, you know, FDOT did a really good job gathering all the comments from the residents, but as we know, they did the same thing for the downtown area, and it was a debacle. And, you know, a lot of their money was wasted laying concrete and asphalt down and, and pulling it back up. So FDOT was asked if they would put a pause on that project, and, and their time, their timeline is pretty quick now, but we've asked them if they'd put a pause, if they would please have a conversation with staff and the commission prior to the final design. And that is why we have the workshop coming up in January. It was well-received by FDOT. They won a successful project, just like we won a successful project. So that is a real important workshop that we will do in January, and, you know, that way we won't waste any FDOT monies and frustrate our residents on that. And I do wanna say that they were very receptive when we talked. I'm sorry, Kristin. Whole list of events, you know, that we've had the last few weeks, I'm not gonna name them, but what, what I really wanna say is, we have an amazing community that's very engaged, from the D A R, from the Historic Society, to Main Street, to the Chamber. Everybody's putting on events, everybody's having a good time. Lot of residents are coming out and enjoying the time, and I just wanna say thank you for having such a wonderful, engaged community. I was able to go to a DARE program at St. Brendan's yesterday, it was pretty cool, and I just wanna just shout out to Officer Rossi and Officer Henderson. They do a really great job with those kids. Officer Rossi is going to be stepping back from the DARE program and entering another role. I don't know if they're gonna fill his spot or not, but you, you all would be very proud of the work that they do. So with all of that, I'll say goodnight and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with, this week we welcomed three new police officers to our force and to our community. Two of them are very good at baking, I heard, but I haven't tasted anything yet, so just in case they wanna bring something for everyone to enjoy, that might be good. National Night Out and River Fest were also great events this past week. The Ormond Memorial Art Museum put on one of the best Veterans Day events I think I've ever attended. Unfortunately, the weather was a little cold and didn't, a little windy, but I think all the performers and everything were, were great there. This past week, too, we also had the memorial for Police Officer Bob Grimm, who his end-of-watch was Saturday, November 13th, 2004. And Officer Grimm was struck and killed while he was investigating a motor, a minor traffic accident on Nova Road. I think this just, you know, brings to light how dangerous of a job it is for our police officers, investigating a minor accident, and Officer Grimm lost his life. And I remember as a kid, when I was probably five or six years old, Officer Grimm used to run by the house with his two boxers unleashed. They were well behaved, though. But I also would give a shout out to Michael Scudero, who at the time worked in the legislature for Pat Patterson, and helped to get the road at Nova Road dedicated to Officer Bob Grimm. So I think it's very important that we do this ceremony every year, and it's great that his widow and daughter and her husband and granddaughter all come out to it, and you can tell that it's very much appreciated. I also was talking to a resident owner of businesses this past Friday, and he was going around doing a punch list for all of his properties, and he turns it into his supervisors on Monday, and that's what they work on for the following week. And I'm kinda to the point where I think we need to start implementing something to that effect, and the reason why I say that is just two examples. The weeds under the Granada Bridge, I don't know who's responsible for them, but last week we had the River Fest, and the embankments going up that should be cement are covered in weeds. And if that's Yellowstone's responsibility, one more reason why we should look at that contract. I've brought it up before, it gets fixed, but then I have to bring it up again before it get fixed. Someone needs to be monitoring this stuff, and I don't really think that was in my scope of work when I took this job, but I'll just throw that out there. The other is weeds at the Ormond Airport. Drove out there today to visit someone at a hangar. There's airplanes parked on the taxi, and weeds are growing almost up into the airplane, so that's not just a, we've had too much rain, or we've had, you know, problems with this or that, whatever it may be. To me, it's neglectful. And, you know, the Ormond Airport, I just got another email as we're sitting here now from a resident, questioning, you know, all the flights going over his house, and, you know, we get these complaints daily, and I know that Claire sent me an email, maybe she sent it to the rest of y'all, that there's some talks with the flight schools. I'm just wondering if maybe we open up seats on the board, and I know it would have to be a change, but maybe we open up on our aviation advisory board to open seats to these flight schools to be able to participate in our aviation advisory board. I don't know if anyone would be willing to explore that, and I don't know if they would want to participate, but we gotta do more. We got to do more. I mean, I've been talking about this airport since I've got elected and before, and the emails we've received day in and day out of these residents, we've got to do more. So I don't know if y'all are willing to explore the option of opening seats, just something I thought of, to the aviation advisory board for some of the flight schools, maybe Phoenix, Sunrise, Embry-Riddle, whoever's using our airport maybe should have a seat at the table and be able to hear our residents' concerns, cause we gotta do more.
I think that's a great idea, but it does have to come to us to add those positions. There, there is a process for that, I know.
Absolutely.
But maybe we should look at that.
Joyce?
So I, I'm not sure that a seat on the board is, you know, would you really want them to be a? them to be a voting member? I think really what you're asking, maybe I'm interpreting what you're asking for, is make sure that they're there at the meetings, that they have representation so that questions can be addressed.
Perhaps maybe a liaison from each of those companies?
I'm willing to give them a seat at the board so they can have a seat at the table to maybe, maybe they'll, if they have that personal, I'm trying to think of the word, the representation with our city, that maybe they'll take it a little more seriously. I don't know. It's just an option I'm throwing out there.
Maybe what you could all to do is, is maybe make it a little broader than that, just in case you can't actually get any of them to volunteer to do that, you know, a seat that maybe is like in maybe a larger category and then appoint someone who's interested to, you know, get on the, take that seat, since we don't know.
Okay.
Maybe just start with a discussion, you know, and open, one of those aviation board meetings, invite them to come and then just see, see how it develops from there.
I'm going to throw a comment in there real quick. I think the only thing I would be concerned about and the downside is that what is the, what is the benefit of them coming, right? Because they're doing what they're doing and there's obviously not any kind of, you know, penalties or anything else for doing what they're doing. So I say to myself, I own the aviation company, why would I want to go to a meeting to get people scrambling at me and attacking me, right? You aren't doing this, you aren't doing that, you know. I mean, do we, do we even invite these people to come when we have the meetings? I know they're publicly noticed, and that might be more of a Stephen question, but, you know, have we invited them to come and addressed the concerns that we have as a board currently? And has that been done before?
You know, years ago, we had a, a kind of a special, what do we call it, a special workshop, a series of workshops about the aviation and the, and the flight schools and whatnot. And, you know, we did gain some traction with the residents there. As I'm sure that most of you know, that we cannot regulate air traffic. That is not something that we are allowed to do. That has to be done by the FAA. I think it's good for them and encourage them to come to the table so they hear the comments firsthand, is what I think I hear Commissioner Sargent saying. And hopefully that they can put faces with names to understand what these residents are going through. We're looking at upgrading our way of tracking that information from, from residents so that we have a better response to them. We're also, as Claire said earlier, that we're meeting with the schools individually to talk to them and impress upon them the complaints that we're getting from residents. We're looking for better ways to monitor all of that. So it's, it's a work in progress and you can certainly try whatever you, you want to do to try to improve that process.
Well, I guess where I'm at is I'm just, I'm very frustrated that what we've been doing isn't working. And I completely understand that when the wheels lift the ground, off the ground, it's FAA's responsibility. Noise abatements are voluntary, you can't make them mandatory, because at the end of the day, safety comes first when you're in the air. But having the dialogue with people using our airport and explaining to them, maybe change your pattern, maybe if you can fly a different way, or just having that open dialogue with anything, whether it's business or the air, air schools, the pilots, whatever it is, open dialogue, I think will solve probably all these problems. Yes, you'll get the one or two that have to fly in, have to fly low, have to get it. Safety comes first, but open dialogue, I think, and I'll just leave that one alone for now. I know Mr. Boyle brought up Avalon Park. I would like to have a shade meeting to be able to discuss this item with my fellow elected officials. We've never been able to talk about it together. I know Daytona had their shade meeting and then voted on something. I just think it's important that we maybe sit down and talk about it. I know in the past, before I was elected, Commissioner Selby at the time asked for a workshop several times and never got it. The public has never really known much about it. Most people in the community probably don't even know the agreement that was, went down in 2004, 2006 with this. We have five new elected officials up here and we've never been able to discuss something. And I just think it's, it's time. It's time for a, a shade meeting, a workshop, whatever we can do legally. I don't know where everyone else is on that, if, if y'all are okay with meeting and having an open discussion.
Hold on one second. Ann-Margaret, can you just comment on that?
Yeah, do you, do you mean a shade meeting particularly just to discuss the settlement offer that was made by Daytona Beach? Is that what you're talking about?
I think to have a discussion in general of where we are, where everyone stands on this. I don't know where any of my fellow commissioners are, and here we are to make decisions on something that I think it's important that we get in a meet.
Yeah, yeah. Let, let's get back to you on that. I don't think shade meeting would be the best way to do that, because we'd be very limited on what we could actually discuss in that shade meeting. So to have a broader discussion, I think we'll have to do it in a different way. And Joyce, who are you saying?
I think there's two things here. One is the settlement offer, if you will, and the other is generally the whole Avalon Park issue is what I hear. So the settlement offer, as I understand it, would have to be discussed in the shade meeting.
Right. Well, we could discuss that. You couldn't actually take a vote on it, but you could discuss it. But, you know, some of the other matters that you're talking about, you want to discuss, I think we should do that in a different, different forum and perhaps, you know, in a workshop or something along those lines. But because we'd be very limited in what we could talk about in the shade.
I understand. I just am, I'm getting kind of frustrated, because I go back to Commissioner Selby, ask him multiple times, never hear anything as when I was a resident coming. And there's really been nothing out there in the public, and now we're in litigation. So I understand we're limited to what we can talk about, but I think it's time for us all to get together and discuss this item.
I agree.
So I don't know if anyone else is on board, but.
I agree.
And I would like to do it sooner than later. I just don't think, I, I think we need to get together as elected officials and discuss a very important item that our residents are faced with. I mean, you're talking $150 million infrastructure. I think we need to discuss it as a, as, as a group, as elected officials.
I thought we weren't allowed to have a shade meeting with this topic, because I know I had asked at one point and it was.
Well, if there are legal issues like a settlement offer, that has to be discussed in a shade meeting. If you want to talk generally about what the contract currently says between Orman and Daytona Beach, you can have that conversation.
Right. Well, you know, the shade meeting, you can be, you're very limited on, on what you can discuss. If we want to do it in another forum, which it sounds like you're more interested in, because this is a very complicated matter. It's not a very, it's not a trip and fall. It's a, you know, it's got a lot of moving parts, it's very complicated. So what, what I'm hearing is that you would like to do it in a forum where you can, you know, ask a lot of questions and really understand, you know, the nuts and bolts of what's going on, you know, from the previous, you know, agreement to where we are, you know, today and what that would like, look like in the future. So let's kind of figure out the best way to do that and we'll, we'll come up with a, we'll come up with a plan and a date.
Okay. Yeah, I would like both. I would like a shade meeting to discuss what was on the table and then a workshop to discuss the else. However y'all want to arrange them, I'll leave it up to y'all if everyone else on the dais is okay with that.
Just to recap though, so I understand it, a shade meeting to discuss the settlement offer and then a workshop or another meeting to discuss the nuts and bolts, as you described, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Another item I'd like to bring up is our contract with our negotiation attorney. Over the past six years, we have spent 1,000, $119,921 since 2020. I'd like to know if the fellow elected officials would be willing to explore putting this attorney on retainer for employment matters and using staff, our highly qualified staff to facilitate the negotiations in Daytona Beach. They're a lot larger than us and they use their HR manager.
We need legal counsel there with us. We absolutely do. We cannot be in a room when they're represented by legal counsel and we're not.
Okay. What if they were not, what if we negotiated where it's, I, I think this is something, you know, we're spending $119,000. I think it's something that as elected officials, we need to decide how we want to move forward with this, when other municipalities are not having legal representation there. I'd like to hear if my fellow elected officials, what, what y'all think about this? I mean, $119,921.
I mean, we, how many people do we have on staff? Five? Five attorneys? Four attorneys?
Oh, our legal staff?
Yeah.
We have three.
Three, okay. And how many does Daytona Beach have?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
Yeah.
They're about double our size.
We're currently short one right now, because Randy's out. So there's only two of you right now. Okay.
When Daytona negotiates, do they have their attorney, does the union have their attorney there? I tend to.
It's a union rep and it's their, the HR director. Holly Hill does very similar. A lot of other municipalities are not using attorneys for negotiations, and I think this is just something we should explore. We're spending a lot of money on outside legal. I definitely think we should have him on retainer for employment-related claims, because those are very specific and there's statutes and there's certain things that you really need, but I, I just.
So I think I asked this at the workshop and I had did a lot of, bit of research where some of the other municipalities didn't bring in the attorneys until they had an impasse.
I just think that's something that we should explore. $119,921 and.
I wouldn't, I would be, I would be okay with the negotiating and initial negotiating happening. I mean, sometimes you can get people in a room and have good conversations and, and you, you figure it out and that's that. But I do like the idea of bringing them back in when there's an impasse, you know. But, but if, but if the union people have an attorney present, it would be an unfair advantage for us not to have.
So let me pose this a different way.
They would have to be nonrepresented by an attorney as well.
So maybe we finish this current round of negotiations, because we're already invested. And then in future ones, I think we need to have the open discussion with however illegal we have to do it, with the police union, fire union and all them, and say, hey, we're going to change our way of doing it. We're going to sit down, we're going to offer our, our HR director or our assistant city manager to do the negotiations, and we're not going to bring attorneys to the table and we'd ask y'all to do the same thing. And do that going forward, so we're not spending money, taxpayer money, for outside legal counsel when we have very capable employees on, on staff. That's just where I'm at. So maybe we'll, we'll look at this in the future. But I think we need to get through this current negotiations and then we can go from there. So just an idea to throw out there to y'all. I pulled off the resolution that Melbourne Beach did, if you can pass that down to city clerk, please, regarding establishing a technology advisory board. If you can pass this down, please. This was resolution number 202505, so they just passed this. And I think this is something that we should probably, you know, we discussed it before. And instead of reinventing the wheel, here it is. We can just have staff bring this back to us, hopefully with any changes that they need to make. And this is really to bring an advisory position to help bring to the commission ways that technology can be utilized to create efficiencies, so.
I like this idea. Thank you.
This is, like I said, they just passed it. Hopefully we don't have to, won't create too much work on, on staff to, to do that. On the workshops, I did not see.
One question for you. It says on here that on the resolution, they have five members plus two alternate members. I mean, are we okay with that, too?
Yeah, I'm fine with exactly the way it is. I don't think it needs any changes. They did it, it seems to be, you know, they're up and, and moving forward. I don't think, I think we just use what other people have done instead of wasting time to do something else. On the workshops, I did not see one. I thought we were going to have one in December regarding the employee benefits, RFP, that was going to go out in January and then in March, and that was not on that list.
I, I got a question on this. What is the urgency on doing the RFP so soon on that? I mean, didn't we just have an RFP for the health insurance broker benefits?
Yeah, I think the RFP was to select, put it out for options to be creative, because before it was limited to just a specific high deductible. So this would be to open it up for creative options that could potentially save the taxpayers' money and provide a great benefit to the employees.
But didn't we give staff direction on how we want the RFP, one before we put it out? We didn't ask.
That was just for our high deductible.
But, but that's what we currently have, though.
We bring all the RFPs to the commission for review before we put them on the street. But I will say that we have several other workshops that we need to schedule, and those include NID, RFP for healthcare, downtown sidewalks, and AI committee. So we haven't, we haven't put those on the schedule, but we'll be happy to come back next time with all those on the schedule.
And I think the current benefits, we're not even complete with either, right? I think we're still working on the existing benefit plan with our broker.
Yes.
Yeah. So we're not even finished with that either. I mean, you know, so I don't think that's going to happen in December, is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I'm saying that there's a lot of workshops that we have. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So we can, we can schedule those as quickly as you like.
I mean, I didn't want to do things so fast, but yet, you know, you, you know, are going to abstain from voting, so I don't know what the urgency is here.
To create a competitive process with more options than just a high deductible.
Well, we had a good option. We had $50,000 on the table versus almost $100.
That was for a high deductible option.
And then, and then by, by not choosing the $50,000 one, it ended up costing us $41,000 extra this year.
We saved over $300,000 a year after you're on the property casually, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know about that. I think I did the math on that. It was.
So what I'm hearing is that you would like these scheduled sooner rather than later. So what we can do, some of these might not take a whole meeting, or if you're willing to come back on an off-meeting day, then we can schedule those on your other Tuesdays in addition to your commission meeting.
I would be willing to do sooner than later as well.
Colford, the other one does going to abstain from voting. Thank you.
I like the color commentary there.
With that, I will say happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your time with family and friends, and remember to make phone calls or text to your friends and family to check on them and make sure they're okay. Good night.
Joyce, are you okay?
I think Commissioner, I can go up to Commissioner.
Okay. Commissioner Deaton, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I don't have a lot tonight. I think we, we heard quite a bit about all of the events that we've been at, and I'm not going to repeat that. We do have to attend a lot of events during this time of year. I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I would like to encourage everybody to up here, if you could, when you have the chance, please help out where you can. We are signed up for the Basket Brigade, we're helping out with the church next week in Georgia. Just anything you can do to possibly help in the community, that is what I think is important for us to be focusing on right now, as well as our families. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Deaton. Happy Thanksgiving. I was following some House bills here that are coming through, and one particular is HB 145. And I had a chance to talk to the city attorney offline about it, about our concerns. And what this bill is, is increases statutory limits on liability for tort claims. And so being that we're self-insured, our, you know, liabilities do have a cap, you know, of about $250,000, something like that. And so with this HB 145, that's going to raise the liabilities a lot higher on us. And being self-insured, that could be, you know, really something of concern. So I'm asking the commission here if we can have at least our legal department or even talk to our lobbyist of a letter of just explaining our concerns about it, because like I said, we're self-insured. And if this bill does pass, the claims would be much higher and that could be really damaging to our, our current budget. So does anybody in the commission have any objections to that?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think it's important to understand through our lobbyists who the sponsors of those bills are and really what's the underlying rationale for that before we prepare a letter so that we don't get a file of.
Fair enough. And I had a chance to look at it, too, and the same sponsor was, was the same sponsor last year on the bill. same sponsor last year on the bill. And, you know, it looks like it's the insurance people that we love so much that are behind this thing. So if we can at least have our lobbyist, you know, give us some information to give back to us, and whatever they suggest that we can do to support the effort of, you know, our concerns with HB 145, that'd be great.
Okay.
Fair enough. Going back to what Commissioner Sargent said about the flight schools, we all get emails every day, I think, right, with the flight schools and the noise and everything else. And I had a chance to talk to Stephen by email, because he was sharing some evens. That's our airport manager, Steve Licklider. And I thought maybe if Stephen, if you may, maybe just come up here and just kind of discuss a little bit about what the implications are, just to kind of recap with everybody here with, you know, the regulation with these flight schools, the noise abatements, and really what our role is here in the city of what we can do to help the residents, and just kind of like where we are with this thing. So everybody just is clear and understands.
Certainly, and certainly, Mr. Mayor, happy to. There are a lot of limitations that airport sponsors have with regard to governing air traffic. As Joyce mentioned, we really do not have any authority to govern air traffic. There is legislation, or there was legislation, specifically the Aircraft Noise and Capacity Act of 1990, which was an effort by Congress to balance the interests of aviation and communities near airports. That had to deal mostly with commercial airports, jet traffic, and there were regulations on like stage one, stage two, stage three jets. You'll hear that if you read the literature. Most of the new jets today are stage four and stage five. They're a lot quieter than the older jets, and so it's less of an issue. The problem with general aviation airports such as ours, where we have predominantly small privately-owned aircraft, what we call piston-powered aircraft with an internal combustion engine, not too dissimilar from what's in an automobile, they're a lot quieter than jets. And most people who live near general aviation airports, I grew up in central Pennsylvania, not too far from a GA airport similar to ours, and if a Cessna 172 or 182 flew over every once in a while, it was really not something that you paid a whole lot of attention to, and most people wouldn't have trouble with it. The unique situation we have here in Florida, where we are the flight training capital of the world, we have such a high volume of flight training that you have people who live near airports who have an airplane flying over every two or three minutes. And so even if it's a small airplane that's not particularly loud, the frequency of exposure to that noise is the problem. Some people can tune it out, but to others, it's kind of like a water torture. And that's the problem with addressing noise abatement. It's a matter of, of personal perception. Some people can tune it out. To some people or to others, it can be very, very troubling. And since we do not have any direct authority to govern or restrict air traffic, because it is a public-use airport, just like we can't arbitrarily prevent people from driving down I-95 or US-1, it puts a lot of limits as to what we can do to affect change. There are also issues that involve traffic patterns and flight performance. Traffic patterns are based on the position of the runway, and they can't really be arbitrarily changed. If we were to try to get a flight school to fly a different pattern, we may end up sending them out over residential areas that previously were not exposed to aircraft noise, and that would also be inappropriate. So as Joyce mentioned, we had a voluntary noise abatement task force back in 2009, and that's something that I'm very proud of, because we did it right. We spent about nine months meeting with residents, meeting with the flight schools. We had a workshop where Embry-Riddle brought a couple of aircraft up and pilots, and they took the members of the task force up in the traffic pattern so they could see how things work, why things work. We had a gentleman named Ted Baldwin, who was a nationally-recognized authority on aviation noise, who came down and conducted a workshop. And so we educated a lot of people about the nature of the issue, and how things work, and why things work. And as a result of that process, where we engaged with people and educated them, and we developed a set of voluntary noise abatement procedures that are legal and actionable, and by putting those in place, we had our noise complaints go down over 70%. And that's pretty much the way it remains now. The complaints that we get, as you all know, are sometimes very resolute, but it's from a relatively small group of folks, and I do my best to address them and answer their questions. But it is a frustrating problem.
So Commissioner Sargent mentioned in his closing comments about having maybe some people in the flight schools to be on a, the board, the airport board, or, you know, so that they have a say in just having a discussion. I mean, is that, are the flight schools, like, I mean, you must be, do you have communication with the flight schools? I mean, is there anything that we can do that we can at least invite them to come to a meeting? I don't know if we do even send the invite. I know they might feel like they're gonna walk into a hornet's nest, but, you know, is there anything that we can do, or you, you know, maybe recommend that sort of we can have that discussion, and they can hear the residents that do have the concerns, and we can maybe try to get this thing under control somehow?
We can certainly invite them. When we had our noise abatement task force, we had members from the flight schools, particularly Embry-Riddle, who came and participated. So I think that they would be open to that. Yes, I do frequently interact with the flight schools. If I get a specific complaint where I think something has been done wrong or inappropriately, I'll report that to the flight schools, and they take action. They'll counsel that pilot and let me know what, you know, what the response was. They've been very, very responsive. They have our noise abatement procedures as part of their standard procedures, and so they do expect their pilots to follow them to the extent, maximum extent that they can. So I think that they would work with us.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, Stephen.
Certainly, yes, sir.
With that said, though, there were some great festivals that did go on. The seafood festival is great. I think I saw that they were up 10% on the attendance this year, so that's good to see. The veterans groups that put together, everything for Veterans Day was spectacular. You know, Commissioner Sargent, you did very well in your speech, and thank you for your service again. And with that said, Thanksgiving's coming up. Okay, I'll remember that. With that said, everybody enjoy Thanksgiving. Don't forget to watch America's Team. And before I adjourn, city manager did have something to say.
Yes. So, if possible, Commissioner Bryle has a conflict for the 20th meeting in January with FDOT. So I don't know what the appetite would be to move that meeting to, with FDOT on the 13th. It's an off-commission meeting week.
I would say that I would be okay with doing that, because Part D's in his district there, and I think he should be there.
So what about the rest of the commission?
Say, move to where?
To the 13th.
To the 13th.
I'm fine with that.
I'm available.
Kristen? Uh-oh.
Baseball, but I will, I can do my best.
Okay.
As long as I can try to figure out, it's a baseball night, we will, I'll do my best.
Okay. So.
I'll add it to my calendar now, but I will do my best.
With the commission's permission, we'll move that to the 13th, just the workshop only.
Okay, workshop only?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. With that said, again, everyone be safe, enjoy Thanksgiving, meeting adjourned.